Bird of your birth, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm just, hang on one second, I'm just getting one thing off here, I'm ready. I already did that, and I did it, so I'm just.
I just made it live, by the way.
Oh. It's live. About battery, yep. Yep. Thank you.
Well, we need one more commissioner.
Yeah, one more, huh?
And we've only got a minute to go, don't we? We have to have four of us here, so.
I think Jared said he was gonna be here.
Yeah, Jared said he would.
Um, yeah, Renee texted me too and said she wouldn't, so. Sounds like somebody's coming.
From somebody?
Steve.
Oh, good. Good, we're in good shape. Yeah. Would you like to do our pledge? This is, um, the week that, let's see, let me find it, you were here.
Okay.
See, I signed that, just sign that one. Okay, just when you can. Okay. You up and running?
Oh, I'm good, I can get it up if you want, sir.
Okay. We'd like to welcome you to our planning commission meeting this evening. This is planning commission meeting for the twenty-third of November, um, twenty-twenty-one. This meeting is being recorded, and we're gonna begin our meeting this evening with an opening prayer by Commissioner Marchbanks.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this evening and give thee thanks for our many blessings. Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the blessing of living in this city, and we pray that we will be able to carry out the business that's before us this evening. Father in Heaven, we thank thee for those that serve our nation and protect us, and for all those that, uh, are in service, uh, in our community as well. Father in Heaven, again, we thank thee for all blessings, and especially this time of year, and pray that all will be well here in Linden, and we say these things in Jesus' name, amen.
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 Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We're gonna begin our meeting this evening with an audible roll call of commissioners. Sharon Call here, Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Jared Showers, um, hasn't arrived yet. Rob Callis.
Here.
Stephen Johnson.
Here.
Scott Thompson.
Here.
And Renee Tribe is excused. Okay, and the next item on the agenda for this evening is the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from July, oh, excuse me, July, November ninth, twenty-twenty-one. And commissioners have had a chance to review those. Are there any changes or corrections? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous, and Commissioner Showers has joined us. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a time for public comment. This would be for any items that are not already on the agenda for this evening. Is there anyone here for that purpose? Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda, this is a plat amendment. This is amended plat B of the Fenton-Olsen subdivision at thirty-five west, seven-twenty-five north, and fifteen west, seven-twenty-five north. And our applicant is Deborah Lepre, is that you? If you'd like to come up to the front. Okay, and there should be a place for you to sign there also. And our presenting staff is Mary Barnes.
All right, thank you, commissioners. So, this item concerns lots five and six on the Fenton and Olsen plat B, um, located at thirty-five west, seven-twenty-five north, and fifteen west, seven-twenty-five north. Um, you might recognize the current plat. There it is. This was approved in October of last year. The reason why was, um, to put this, to make it come out here a little to the east for a swimming pool that was on lot four. Today, the applicant, Deborah Lepre, is asking for a plat amendment from this plat to move this property line in the middle. Not this, not this bottom, um, quarter, but just this dashed line, move this dashed line ten feet to the west. Um, this will allow more room for development on the Lepre lot, which is this lot five. Um, moving the lot line ten feet to the west will not cause the existing house on lot six to enter into the side yard setback. Um, and the applicant is currently working to secure approval from utility companies, um, to move the public utility easement. And the planning commission is the final land use authority on this matter.
Um, the only question I have is if, if that lot line is the only one being moved, what does that do with the other lot lines along there, or does, is that a problem, or?
Corner lot.
They, they, the lot six still has a hundred and sixty-seven feet of frontage, so they'll, they'll still be able to meet all of the, the minimums, minimum frontage and setback requirements for the existing home. That new one is just lot five, originally, with the narrowness of the lot, it could only face, the home can only face seven-twenty-five north. By moving that lot to the west, the home can now face Main Street and meet setback requirements.
Okay.
I doubt there's really any utilities in that easement where the line's being moved, or is there, do you know if there are utilities?
There are utilities.
What's, what's in that easement?
Um, it, it, it just ends right at the corner there.
Uh-huh.
So it, it just goes, it doesn't continue on, but it ends just, um, where the previous line was about, uh, about five feet in.
But as far as going the full length?
No, it, there's no, there's nothing, there's nothing there.
I wouldn't imagine there would be.
No.
Because that line was just created last.
Yeah, that's why I figured if there's an easement there, which I don't see on the plat, it surely hasn't been used.
Yeah, the, the only easement is just on that, uh, north.
On the north, on seven-twenty-five north.
And I didn't know if you needed them to still be moved or, or not.
I don't think anything needs to be moved there, you're not gonna build in that easement area anyway.
Yeah, we're, we're just checking out with our city engineering deployment, but we should be fine.
And are you, are you purchasing that additional property?
Yes, we're purchasing that little strip of land.
Okay, okay. I don't have any additional questions, you need you?
Pretty straightforward, both property owners are involved, involved in it.
Right. Um, and do you have any additional information for us?
No, just pretty straightforward on that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the applicant's request for plat amendment approval for the Fenton-Olsen plat B with the following conditions. One through four is listed in the staff report.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And are you here with her this evening, or are you here for a different purpose, or?
I'm listening in for a friend who came here tonight, Michael Florence.
Right, right.
I'm just listening, so.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number five. This is, uh, a discussion for, on the setbacks from commercial to residential, and our presenting staff is Michael Florence.
Great, thank you, commissioners. Uh, in your staff report this week, I provided for you some, uh, examples of what surrounding communities and other communities in Utah, um, their, their setback requirement from commercial to residential properties and residential zones. So, a lot of these, you know, our current requirement is a forty-foot setback, that's, that's all it says. And I just want, kinda what I wanted to do was, we, we briefly discussed this last week, that I'd bring some information back to you. Just kinda wanted to have a discussion tonight on, you know, do you think it'd be appropriate to change the ordinance? Do we feel our ordinance is adequate? And, you know, do we, do we wanna look at, look at some, maybe some transition requirements, um, from a residential use or zone to, to commercial? Uh, a lot of the examples I provided for you, um, many of them have to, that setback depends on the height of the building. So that they establish a minimum setback, but then they also say, you know, you'll have one foot of additional setback per the height of the building. And so, um, you can see some different transition requirements, um, you know, Provost's got one in their, in their downtown zone. You know, there, there is, theirs is more, um, design oriented, so if you're within sixty feet of a, a residential zone, you've gotta have a, um, a gabled or pitched roof. But they only require a twenty-foot setback. Uh, South Salt Lake, when I was there, we came up with this diagram here, that you had to have a minimum twenty-foot setback at a twenty-five-foot height. And that twenty-five-foot height went from twenty feet, twenty-foot setback to thirty feet, and then after thirty feet, you could have one additional foot of, uh, height for every one foot of setback. And, uh, so that's, that's how they determine theirs. Riverton, uh, theirs is dependent on the, you know, they, they give the same thing, one foot of setback for every foot of building height with, with a minimum setback of fifteen. Uh, you know, Springville, same, they've, they've got some minimum one, one-foot requirements after, uh, minimum setbacks. Uh, and then, you know, Lehigh and Mill Creek, uh, did, uh, also, well, sorry, Mill, Lehigh did that as well as, um, Mill Creek. They said, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're within a hundred feet of a, a residential property, you're limited to that thirty-five-foot height requirement. So, there, there's some different ways we could look at that, we could set a minimum setback and minimum height requirements depending on the height of the building. It, it does become a little more tricky once you get into maybe a three-story building, because then you're really maybe looking down more into someone's yard where, you know, if you had a, you know, let's take, for example, maybe, maybe I'll pull this one up. You've got this Bella Vista, where the Bella Vista Reception Center is. You know, that, that's a pretty good setback, they've got, they, their, their building's forty-six feet in height, three stories, forty-six feet in height, but they've got a hundred-foot setback. So I think once you get to three stories, you probably wanna look at it maybe a little greater setback. You know, something like, similar to this, uh, development, you know, 'cause it, I think forty, you know, if you had a forty-six-foot tall building and a forty-six-foot setback, you're, I think you're still kinda maybe feeling right on top of that existing, you know, single family. So, th- those were kinda just the examples I gave, gave you in your staff report. You know, I, I think tonight I just wanna have discussion, there's, I haven't given out any public notices or wrote any ordinances, just more wanna just have that discussion tonight on, on if we wanna make any changes.
Mike, remind me what the, uh, the height, uh, maximum is in, in a residential neighborhood for a two-story home, I, I.
Thirty-five.
It's thirty-five feet, isn't it?
Thirty-five, and then the commercial zones, it's forty-eight feet.
Right, forty-eight?
Yes.
Unless it's the commercial, there was another zone that was as high as eighty, wasn't there?
Yes, there was, there was the commercial, commercial general A eight zone. And that zone is really only, um, out by the Pleasant Grove interchange. Let's see.
I think it's down in the, uh, Soft Copy subdivision, isn't it, by?
So you have.
Murdoch, Sher, Murdoch Hyundai and.
Yeah, you've got this one right here, uh, just off, uh, sixteen-hundred north, you've got those two areas. And you've, and then you've got the, over here where Mark Weldon be, built those office buildings.
Okay.
But if you look just at State Street, you know, that would be the, the forty-eight feet for the commercial general A and commercial general S and just general commercial.
Wasn't there a, um, a development we were discussing, and it doesn't look like it's went through, where there was a lot of discussion about the setback down along, um, I guess it's two hundred.
South.
Two hundred south down near, down near, um, Home Depot, there was one there, the neighbors were all upset about the setback. Would you recall what those, what the issue was there, or how? I, I remember it met the code by setting it back there, but they were just really, they were really upset about the height of the building.
Yeah, we ended up changing the, the zoning ordinance for that, um.
Well, they, yeah, to four-story.
They were, they were concerned about, I think there's an eighty-foot setback, let's go to that really quick. Actually, I think it was for that, did we, I'm trying to remember now, if we changed the ordinance?
I thought we.
Or if it was just site plan of approval?
I thought we decided to, with neighbors, to go ahead and do a four-story rather than multiple three stories or something.
Or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I can't remember exactly, but they decided that they'd rather go with the heights rather than.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that, but I know we, we, I thought we gave a larger setback for that.
Yeah, we did. 'Cause I remember the setback was they had, they had landscape, they had parking lot, they had more landscape.
They wanted the building pushed further to the east.
It seemed like they deci, we decided to go with the, uh, the heights rather than.
Because they want over toward the.
Then give concessions otherwise.
You mean allow the developer to go higher, but we gave a greater setback.
Yeah, and, and landscaping and that kind of thing. Yeah, it seemed, I, as I recall, but I don't, I'm not sure.
In a situation like that, if they were to build a commercial building facing west, so that up against those Second South homes, that was a side yard.
Oh, yeah.
What would that do?
Sorry, I, I was reading this and.
So if you have a development that's, let's say it's corner lot, and the building, say, faces the street, which is facing south or west. And the side yard is next to the backyards of the homes there, do you still have to, in our per, current code, do you have to, you only have to have the side setback of?
Well, our current.
Yeah, it says.
I mean, 'cause you could really see right down into the people's backyard that way.
Yeah.
What is ours right now?
Ours is.
Twenty feet. Side or rear yard setback when adjacent to residential use or a residential zone is forty feet.
Forty feet, yeah.
I'm in the wrong area.
Both side and front.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think, I think.
So it is, let's see, side, side or rear yard setback when adjacent to a residential user zone, so it's forty feet.
Forty feet, mhm. That's more than most of these other communities we're looking at.
But, but at the same time, you know, Linden is built, I mean, we're a much more rural community than, than those other areas are too. And as far as.
Well, one could argue that that makes it, so it should be shorter, because you've got bigger lots. I'm not saying that it's, should be shorter, I like the forty feet.
I, I like it too, I just think it, I think it goes.
Because what we're trying to prevent here is a multi-story building with second, third, and fourth floors, whatever, looking into the backyards of homes.
Right.
And I think there's some concern from that email you got today, that, you know, to, you've only got a forty-foot setback, and you can allow a forty-eight-foot tall building, should there be more of a transition for those taller buildings?
So the taller ones, and I hadn't, I'm sorry, hadn't noticed that email that came in this afternoon.
I couldn't quite understand what she was saying, uh, was she saying it should be greater than forty feet, or?
I think for those taller three, three and four-story buildings, it should be more.
Okay, that's what she was saying.
But I think, Mike, at least, we've seen a couple come, where if it's only gonna be a one-story building, maybe forty doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we didn't, that was stirred this up as well, it's like, 'cause there's, in some cases, forty feet is, can be deemed excessive if it's just a single-story building, going against it. I mean, that seems, that seems like, so.
Especially with a seven-foot wall.
Yes, I almost liked Lehigh's ordinance a lot, how they really emphasize the landscaping. So they'll allow a landscape buffer of a minimum of twelve feet for all one-story buildings. So they're focused more on the buffering, huh, than, than, you know, maybe the, the distance requirement, at least for one-story buildings. And maybe we reduce that to twenty and a half, more landscaping and trees in there, or.
Yeah, 'cause it, go ahead.
I hesitate to jump on landscaping, uh, 'cause with, I, I think our water situation is, so I gotta be careful of adding more grass, more trees, more in the future, I mean, that could come back to get us. So, I mean, I can see the buffer, but maybe not.
But every one of these cities, it requires it to be landscaped, though.
Yeah.
Lehigh today, though, and I'm amazed at how much is already getting zero-scaped, I mean.
Yeah.
Totally gravel and drought-resistant, planting, no grass.
Well, if there's a parking lot, that could be considered a setback, right?
Yes.
I, yeah, I don't know that we need to force it to be landscaped if it's.
Right, that's.
A hundred feet of la, of parking lot, maybe you have some landscape buffer.
Yeah, you have to do something to make, make it look nice, but.
Yeah.
The hundred-foot of parking lot in this example I just gave, does the same thing, it prevents the building from looking into the backyard.
Like, I'm wondering, though, like, if you had a, say, a drive-through, you know, depending on where that drive-through, uh, ordering sign is, you know, may, maybe you do want some landscaping to help buffer that, that sound.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
As far as twenty feet, twenty feet's gonna be shorter than a lot of homes. Uh, uh, one-story commercial office building is gonna be shorter than, you know, not as tall as most homes.
Sure.
You know.
Well, and that's the, one of the things we're talking about, is we may need to modify our landscaping requirements if we're.
Currently require.
Having to.
Require green space.
Really, it's, we, we've been interpreting that as seventy percent vegetation, and so.
Right.
You know, people will put the Carl Forrester grass and the Russian sage, and that makes up a lot of your, you know, so more plants than, than necessarily grass.
But we'll see if we can continue to do that with the water situation.
Consider beautification as some kind or another, instead of landscaping, you know, I look at these, like, beautiful concrete, something or another, that could, you know, beautify instead of, I don't know.
I'd say, you know, we, we have to be careful, we have to be careful to have, it's somewhat black and white. You know, someone's definition of beautification is different than our definition, and, and we get into this gray area, so we sorta have to have some def, definition for us to be able to, to make consistent decisions.
A little bit of gravel.
Kind of code on it.
Yeah, you know, so, but I, but I, you know, I think, I like the, I sorta like the concept, I could see that our forty feet, based on everybody else, is pretty excessive, based on everybody else. But, so I like the possibility, maybe shortening that slightly, but then do the rent, do the.
Transition.
Setback due to height.
Yeah.
You know, so you, you maybe can go down to thirty-five on a one-story, but then you gotta go, as it starts going up, then you start stepping back. I think that makes sense, maybe accomplishes what we're after a little bit, without, you know, going too hard either, either direction.
Now, Springville's is thirty-five feet, and then they also have a transition.
And it's interesting, some cities are more focused on the rear setback than they are the side setback.
I think that's because most of those types of developments back on the residential. My example was if you're back or side onto that residential, then you got a different situation.
I think the side, this should be the same, if the side, like, just to prevent what you're talking about, prevent somebody coming in going, oh, we're only gonna be twenty feet off this one.
Yeah, I think any, any, probably the same, whether, whatever side of the, but residential.
If it's residential.
Right.
If it's next to commercial, you can build it to the property line if you want.
Right.
But, um, yeah, I, I like the transition, something, 'cause I, I, I think some of the things we've, that have been brought before us, were hampered to approve, maybe a better design because of the ordinance.
Like the example you gave us.
But do you wanna go as low as twenty, though?
If, if it's single-story, I don't think there's any problem with twenty, I mean, that's what residential setback, isn't it?
It's thirty.
Those single-story ones that you just approved last week, uh, with the, what do you call, the Beans and Brew and the Barbershop, those, those are single-story, and they were sixteen feet in, in height.
Yeah.
With the parabets, I think they're twenty.
Yeah, but, but, but along with that, we're requiring that seven-foot, that seven-foot base.
Well, and they, they still have to have the forty-foot setback.
Yeah.
Those do, right? I mean, with a seven-foot wall, so I'm, I think if they're single-story, I.
But most of us have drive-throughs and that too, so, all but one.
Yeah, I know you have to be pretty definite, so there's not a lot of room for.
Yeah.
Debate or interpretation, but it would sure be nice to have some kind of a clause that, in certain situations, there may be able to be some exceptions made, like the one we looked at.
Yeah.
To me, that made so much more sense.
Maybe if it's landscaping or.
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know, like.
I, I guess, I, I, our attorney would probably tell us, hey, you gotta be black or white, but.
And I, like Lehigh said, "The landscape buffer requirements may be modified as deemed appropriate by the planning commission if the following conditions apply. The adjacent property owner consistent, consents in writing to the modification." I, I don't know how our attorney would feel about that, but, but you're also hampering future property owners.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we, me personally, I don't think I wanna get, get, add any more into, oh, if it's this way, that the roof structure has to be this, it has to be that. That's, once again, sort of hemming this in and, and. That's, once again, sort of hemming this in and, and maybe preventing the type of building to go in, it's like, one of the, one of them focused on a parapet, or this, or that. I don't know that we necessarily wanna go there, we wanna have the flexibility when they come, when, when they come before, if it's a good-looking, if it's a good-looking building in that good spot, we don't wanna force them to put a parapet or something.
Remember the example he showed us last week, or last time, where the driveway meandered through the project, because it couldn't be right up against the residential.
Correct.
Where if it would've been approved against the residential, would've made much more sense for the homeowner and the property developer.
Absolutely.
And, I guess, the one you showed us, Mike, what, what setback, setback would have they needed to make that work? You know, as we're discussing this, you know, what, was that a twenty-foot, would a twenty-foot setback would've worked with that one, or would it have had?
That one, actually, let me go to the first one. That's the one we approved. We had to have the setback.
Which still puts the cars right by the, the.
The wall.
By the homeowner, it's just that, in a different fashion.
So this was the one they wanted to originally do, so they had a sixteen-foot setback right here.
And where's the building edge?
It's, it's right along.
Sixteen foot from the building?
Yeah, this one was sixteen foot from the property line, from the property line to the building.
So instead of doing that, we did show the other one again?
Instead, we did this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if it was twenty, could they have, could they have complied with the twenty and squeezed it in?
Yeah, they probably could've decreased the size of these buildings a, a little bit.
Just a little bit, just, yeah. So I think a lot of things, you know, the twenty-foot would allow for like a drive-through or different things that. I mean, if we went thirty, I don't think it really helps solve any of these situations.
No.
You know, the way we did the car wash the other day was because it was not residential, it was agricultural, wasn't it?
No, that, those were residential as well.
The backside was residential, but.
And that worked out well, cause they could do the parking.
Yeah.
There, so let's see.
But they had the twenty-foot setback, or forty-foot setback.
Yeah, they, they were able to do that, um. Yeah, cause they have the, they have the ten feet of landscaping that's required, cause they have parking next to the residential. So they have the ten feet of landscaping, the parking, the twenty-four-foot drive aisle that.
Thinking the car wash, is, do you have that one there?
Yeah, here's the car wash.
You have that car wash coming right up again.
Yeah, they're forty feet.
Forty feet up here. That's what made that work.
Instead of how Orem, Orem went ten feet or equal to the height of the structure, where if that was twenty feet. Or equal, equal to the height of the structure, or something like that, cause that, that taller your building is, automatically further back it has to go.
Yeah, I think there hits a point where we have to do it maybe more than a foot, though. Like you said, once you, once you hit the third story, you're gonna have to go more than a foot, or else it's gonna.
I agree.
Um, but.
What, what if I worked on, I mean, if you're open to it, I, I can put some language together, and we can talk about it at the next meeting. The council's not gonna. Adopt anything, probably until they have a new council member on board, so, I mean, that, that gives us a, a little while to, to work on it.
So, back to that one we looked at the other day, Mike.
Yeah.
If, but if there was a landscaping requirement, that would still preclude this one. I mean, cause it, it's cars, right? I mean, if we said there had to be so much landscaping, this still wouldn't work.
Right.
Yeah, it looks like they just have a small portion of landscaping south of the cars.
Right, but if, if part of the setback was a required ten-foot landscaping strip, like we currently have, right?
Right now, we only require that when there's parking next to residential. We don't require it with, with, with a drive-through or a driveway.
Okay, so it, this would be okay, then, that one would've been okay, okay.
And I don't know if that's something we wanna change, to have it as a part of that setback. You know, if you've got vehicles idling there, I don't, I don't know if that's a, you know, if you, maybe if it's a, if you have a drive-through next to residential, maybe there's some landscaping requirements or. Trees to try and buffer that noise for, with vehicles idling.
There's a seven-foot wall, there's a seven, there's a seven-foot wall, and they're sitting, the cars six feet, less than six feet tall.
Yeah.
It's pretty, but it's pretty buffered.
And I still think there needs to be somewhat of a buffer. You know, maybe not as much as we're requiring right now, but I think there needs to be some buffer.
Well, currently, there's no landscape requirement, right?
Right.
There's just a wall requirement.
Just the wall.
If it was twenty feet, if we made it twenty feet, then we can spec out at least ten feet of.
Well, the driveway, they said, was like sixteen.
Twelve, that's me, twelve to sixteen.
Twelve, sixteen, so if we had a four-foot landscape strip, that's, that's all, you know what I'm saying, that's all you've got, if you do twenty.
In that situation, but.
I'll see if I can find some more ordinances when, with drive-throughs next to residential, if there's any requirements for that.
It just seems to be, that seems to be the new wave right now, right, is drive-through, none of us wants to go to a mortar store anymore, we want to order online.
Yep.
Drive-through and pick it up.
But as I'm looking at these, most of those require some kind of landscaping strip. You know, Lehigh, they've got twenty-five percent of landscaping. Um, Farmington, they've got. Landscape strip, not less than twenty feet in width. Um, Springville doesn't outline that, but it just seems like each one of those, most of those have that, that landscaping strip.
But I don't know if they were acquiring the wall, cause most lands, landscape strips do very little for the residents unless they're trees, right? I mean, if we put a seven-foot wall, they're not gonna see bushes, they're not gonna see grass, they're not gonna see, the only thing that makes sense would be. A tree that gives them some higher, right, sh- um, shield, so if, if it's not trees, I don't know any real benefit. To the residential people putting in a landscape strip, um.
I don't know.
Uh, other than something.
What? So people don't pull through, crash through the fence?
Yeah.
But, I guess, that, that, that could be, I, I don't know if many people go through the, the concrete fences, um.
Maybe not through them, I guess, but I've seen people go through those fences.
Yeah. And, and that might make sense there, but as far as beautification. And I, I agree that, you know, making them put just a landscape strip there that might be grass or something, in our current water situation, does not make sense.
It's gonna snow.
It's gonna snow somewhere, let's hope it's here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What if I looked at, you know, brought you back some examples of, for a single-story, you know, maybe a twenty-foot setback.
Mm-hmm.
For a two-story. Um, we still that minimum twenty-foot setback, and then. I mean, trying to think.
Well, most of these, don't they have an additional, don't they have a, if it's more than?
If we said this, like, if we did something like South Salt Lake's, twenty feet, a twenty-five-foot building height is permitted in between the property line and thirty feet. And then when you get up to above the thirty-five feet or something, that's allowed, you know, cause thirty-five feet's allowed in re- single-family. So maybe if anything above thirty-five feet, then we have to have that greater.
Maybe a hundred-foot setback, or something on thirty-five feet or higher.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what Mill Creek has, when I looked at it, yeah, maximum it thirty-five feet if, within a hundred feet of a residential zone boundary.
Right.
You kinda indicated last week, time we met, when you were addressing this, that there was maybe some pushback from some developers.
Uh, the, the only one, the only one that has come in and talked to me is, where's Google Maps?
Is, is the, I mean, I can understand why you may need to do some changes, but is the, is the big reason why you were thinking about it, was because of what South Salt Lake?
No, I've had one resident approach me for a while about it, she was concerned about that forty-eight-foot tall building being able to go within forty feet. Of a, of a residential property.
So she felt like it should be more than that?
Yeah, and then I had this, this, uh, Jason Brown, um, he, he's trying to buy this property right here, and he wanted to do. Um, an addition, but he's, his addition, actually, this property's only. You know, that's forty feet, so he, you know, he was wondering, he's got a one-story addition he'd like to do on this building right here, but he's gotta keep a forty-foot setback. So he was wondering about if the city would be interested in changing the ordinance.
So, so we have less setback to the one-story building?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Cause it's gonna be a little, the way the property line is, I, for a member, right, he couldn't make it equal with forty feet, right?
Stagger it off or something.
Could have to stagger it or something, if I remember.
Yeah, I, yeah, it, barely, I think just a small, eh, can't, yeah, I'd, I'd have to look on the different.
Think the way the angle of the property line, it's like thirty-eight feet or something like that.
Right, yeah.
Let's see.
Right, and that's a situation where you look at it and go.
I think we'd be glad to look at it, you know, to have you put something together and then look at it, and if we need to modify it a little bit, then. Go ahead, and if you'd give your name?
My name's Rachel Becker. Uh, I live down in the Pheasant Brook subdivision. My friend Angie is the one who sent the email and, uh, couldn't be here tonight.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't.
About the possible development going in just south of their homes, they live on two fifty north in Pheasant Brook.
Uh-huh.
Um, behind the Linden Nursery area.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Um, mostly because another part of our, um, war that has been impacted by Avalon. Um, if you drive through Colmore Court over there, feels like those buildings are gonna fall on you, they're so close to the residences. And the people on two fifty north, including Angie, do not want that to be repeated. Those are huge, and Avalon is just huge. Lots, the view of the mountains that people bought those lots for, you know, and so she doesn't want that to happen, and I understand exactly what she's saying. She doesn't want those, those really tall buildings in her backyard staring into the.
And where is it that she's concerned about that at?
Um, her big concern is south of her house, so she's.
South of Angie's?
Sorry?
South of Angie's?
Yeah, so it's, it's where Linden Nursery owns property.
Well, isn't it south of hers, Danny's property?
Yeah, that's, that's owned residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Danny's property is just south.
So all they can do there is twenty thousand square foot, single-family lots.
Okay.
At, to the east, it's gonna be the new, the new zone where it's limited to two stories, so.
Yeah, and she was also concerned about over by Home Depot on two hundred south.
Oh, okay, where are we talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, they're just saying, look, if you're gonna put, you know, commercial, post residential, these single-family homes need some space. You know, if you've got children, you know, that kind of see issues, and so that's, that's what she just asked me to come and listen for.
And there's not a lot of residential left on State Street, like, as far as, you know, si- single-family, that's, that, um. That commercial would go in next to, there's, there's only a handful of, in, uh, single fami- it's more that rear setback that we'll be dealing with in the future.
Well, and it, and it sounds like, from the way we're talking, though, is, um, there wouldn't be. Quite as big a setback on, on businesses that were commercial, it was one-story or two-story, but if it. Went higher than that, it could be even increased setback from what it is. I- is that accurate?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that, yeah, and I, but you said something earlier, and I, I kinda, you said twenty-foot setback for a two, one-story, and twenty-foot for a two-story. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it go to a forty-foot for a two-story?
A two-story, I mean, you're not any, you're probably still less.
Same as a home. Well, maybe we need to then go to the thirty for a home. Yeah. A home's thirty, so maybe if we go to two-story, it should go.
Thirty feet.
To thirty feet, the same as a residential setback, and then, or something like that.
Cause twenty feet, cause twenty feet, that means those windows are only twenty feet from the wall, and I, and I can see over the wall.
Cause he was talking, what he was mentioning is that the current height for a home is thirty-five feet.
Correct, okay.
But also, you've got your rear yard setback that's thirty feet.
Yeah, a thirty-foot, yeah, a thirty-foot, your rear yard setback.
Maybe we come up with what a height for the single-family, and then you say above that is the one foot.
Yep, yeah.
So.
And we gotta go on one-foot increment above that. What's kinda interesting, though, about the Avalon situation there, I was involved with the subdivision to the, to the north of Avalon. And I was concerned, and yet Ivory wasn't concerned, and, and the people that bought all those homes and lots, some of them been reselling for a million and a half bucks. Down there, so when everything's nice, it seems to work out. But I thought, I, I thought Ivory would have a hard time selling, selling those lots, and they didn't.
Well, when they kept really good care of their homes, yeah, they were sell, they are selling for a lot, that's true.
But I mean, they were, they were buying them and building them after the building was already approved.
So that's the backside of Avalon.
Was already there, so they knew what they had as a neighbor.
Those homes back in the day.
Okay, well, I, I think that's good, I'll, I'll work some language up and we can start working on it.
Well, appreciate you being here to provide that input, thank you.
Thanks, you guys are, and, yeah, you're not thanked enough for the, the stuff that you do for Linda, so. I appreciate that you are watching over this guy.
We do try hard. But thanks for being here. So, uh, this was just a discussion, so have you got a direction you're gonna go on that, and?
I think so.
Okay, okay. Um, we don't really, we don't have anything else on the agenda, except that, um, well, this is the planning commissioner, if the commissioners, if you have anything you'd like to bring up?
I don't have anything.
I, um, I, I went to the last, was it the last city council meeting, and they were, you know, talking about the, the. Subdivision back behind Linden Nursery, you know, the planned community. But one of the residents caught me out here in the hallway and really, um. Expressed her feelings as far as the, the reception center, that Wild Oaks, and what that's doing to that area. Um, and then I, then luckily, the chief of police walked out right then, and so she, um. Turned to him and expressed her feelings on that, I, and, and I kinda walked off, he probably wasn't real happy with me, but. I, I didn't have anything to be able to provide, but is there anything?
Or complaint, traffic, or?
Well, the parking is a huge issue, and she's, she was saying that where there's no parking, uh, signs, you know, they don't, but. It should extend further down that street, cause they can't get through that street.
What street are we talking?
Into their areas.
Gilman Lane.
Gilman Lane, yeah, we've heard that, we've been there, done that, I don't know what to say.
And they, she said that the noise ordinance is very frequently violated with the outside. Um, and there's outside events with bands and different things that come in, and she just. You know, expressed, she said it's very difficult to do anything in your own backyard, uh, when that's going on. Um, sh- her thing was that initially, um, you know, when they would call the police, then they would respond, but she. They're feeling like they're just getting tired of being called now.
So she was saying that people are still parking on the no-park street?
And they're not on the no-park part, she said they, but she feels like it should extend further down the street.
Well, I, I think we, we had, we had had problems with people parking, um.
If you post a no-parking, that means the family can't park there either.
Yeah, see, and that's what's gonna end up happening, that's what's gonna end up happening, is people, you know, we, I had that during my career many, many times, people complain about speed, they wanna speed bump. You put it in front of their house, knowing that they're gonna take it out a week later, cause they hated it, so, I mean, or, or they complain, or they complain about speed, and the first person you caught speed was them.
I don't want other people to park in front of my house, I wanna park in front of my house.
We have it signed down. We have it signed down to the, the end of the cul-de-sac, right here.
Right. Right.
But they they can park on the street there, there's there's curb and gutter, they, um, but the problem is they're they're parking in the cul-de-sacs.
Right.
Down here.
Right.
And they they have, they do put up signs, A-frame signs, saying don't park in the cul-de-sac. I've seen those, but they they still get ignored sometimes. I know they are leasing parking from the church over here. They've shuttled people back and forth from the the church to the reception center.
She said it's not adequate. She said it's, it's just not adequate and 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 then, you know, she talked about, you know, if the outdoor events, you know, vi- violate that noise ordinance so often, is there any way that outdoor events can be limited as far as what they can have outdoors?
Yeah, I think we probably need to look at the regulation again on that, and if there's a sound requirement. I know there's a specific DJ that they use and he tries to show off. Mike Jorgensen hired him, or a wedding party hired that same DJ to come over to Walker Farms and after that, Mike said, I'm never hiring another DJ. So, I think there's particular DJs who Wild Oak hires or allows to come there that that cause problems. Um, I I personally haven't received a complaint since probably June, so I I thought things had been getting better over there until.
Not not according to her. She said, I said, well, now that the weather's getting cooler, is it better? She says, cuz it's, I said, do you just have a couple of events a week? And she said, oh, no, it's every, it's about every night in the summertime. She says, now it's down to about three times a week.
Where does she live on the map? Do you know?
I don't know exactly.
I don't, I.
Do you know what her name is?
On that street.
It's Lori Esteban.
Okay, she's on the, on the south side of Gilman Lane. There, but it's interesting, there's other neighbors right around her there.
Actually, north side of Gilman Lane.
Yeah, the north side, yeah, north side of Gilman Lane.
Well, I know people are really unhappy about it because, I mean, I I went into, um, oh, it's just a meeting I go to and the lady asked where I was from and I told her and anyway, somehow the conversation got around to that and a lot of feelings over it.
Yeah.
So anyway, they feel like, they, she said they feel like there's no police presence when there's violations.
Is the, is the ordinance not strong enough for the law enforcement to be able to enforce it on the spot?
I mean, I think city council didn't even pass an old ordinance. I don't think we have it, we have it, if it's a nuisance.
I I did kinda, um, say, oh, here's the police chief. And then I kinda.
I'll bring that up in one of our department meetings.
Slipped, slipped out the door, cuz there wasn't anything I could do.
Yeah, I'll I'll be honest with you, I haven't received a complaint since June, so I thought things had been getting better.
Not according to her.
Yeah.
And not according to this other lady that I got nabbed on too.
You know, it was pretty bad at the Lyndon Barn for a while. Well, I don't know, you guys, how close are you from the Lyndon Barn? It was bad for a while, but I think it's improved. Gosh, it's hard, several of the neighbors.
So is this consistent with what you hear from people down there? About the Wild Oak Reception Center.
I don't know anybody who's happy with it, not even one person. They're all just very grumpy about the whole thing. I mean, it's better now, obviously, that you put up the signs so that they, people won't park there and everything, but but no, nobody's happy with it.
Yeah, anyway, just the parking's inadequate, the noise is way too loud for a neighborhood and.
I'm trying to recall, how many parking stalls did they have?
Seventy five.
And we increased.
Um, it's based on occupancy. Now, we just changed that, if you remember, we we just modified that parking requirement, but it doesn't affect that.
We increased the requirement on that, and then also increased the distance they had to be from residential. And and I, but it's kinda too little, too late on that for these residents.
Yeah, I I, you know, it's, we, it's, they're in in a commercial storage zone, and for some reason, our city ordinance allowed reception centers in a commercial storage zone, so.
If you recall, though, there, the overflow was was actually gonna be on the car lot to the north.
They talked about that.
Yeah.
They never came to any agreements on that.
Never come to any kind of an agreement to.
They didn't.
So that's why they're, they are using the church parking lot over there.
Well, it sounds like they're making an effort to try and remediate the problem.
I'll bring it up in in one of our directors' meetings and we'll we'll discuss it again.
That 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 whole thing, what I remember was sort of a classic example of when we don't have laws that we can deal with. All we could do is we 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 made them do every little thing the law said, but none of us liked it, but there was nothing we could do cuz that's the way the law was written.
It was always, they were doing it and then coming in and asking for permission.
Yeah.
But I think a lot of.
Yeah.
We were hoping too, though, I think the commission, that's when we were crafting the noise, no, the noise, which the city council just put aside, if I remember right.
That was prior, cuz the noise ordinance that you guys had recommended, that was approved prior to me starting, just barely.
Yeah, so I think we were hoping that that would help solve these problems, but.
Well, and what what got us on that, remember, was the
The barn, right?
The barn, the reception's going on over in the barn east of, uh, the Salisbury, Fezabur. Thing, there was a lot of noise coming from the barn.
Oh, yeah, people were complaining back behind.
Uh, you know, another resident said, that's the reason we voted for a different mayor to come in and different city council people, cuz we felt like we hadn't received the attention that we needed.
You know, you're never gonna have it for clear.
But if you vote for different people to come.
From where, from where I live here, you can hear the pickleball courts, you can hear the swimming pool. Music and kids screaming all the time. I mean.
State Street?
You're just never gonna get it.
No.
I can, I can hear the 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 bells of the district old school.
I would pass those comment songs, but I'm sure the chief of police heard them.
Yep.
And probably isn't happy with me that I kinda.
Yeah, I'll bring that up in our director's meeting.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Yeah, this, tentatively, this might be our last meeting for the year. Um, we have, we have one scheduled for our December, the set, that second Tuesday in December, but we may not have any items on that agenda, so I'll I'll let you know a little bit later, but this might be our last meeting, so. Did anybody else want to register for the Christmas party next Thursday?
I want to.
We have Sharon and we have Mike.
Where are you going? I unfortunately have three Christmas concerts at two different schools and just happens to be the magical time of year. Get some good entertainment, Mike?
It's always really nice.
Choir is coming again.
Also, which which one?
They don't know.
If the chamber, chamber choir's coming now. So we'll see, maybe.
Okay, well, if it's last minute, we have an ex, we have extra feed, so.
I'll have, we'll have fun. Okay, I, if if you don't have anything else, we can go home early tonight, so thank you for being here with us. Yeah, I do need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I think so. Good night.
One of you guys is gonna break ground.